Alrighty then, it's seven o'clock and I'd like to call this City Council, Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Adams, Mr. Brown, Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan is entering. Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Yes.
Mayor pressing.
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda?
No.
Do we have a staff report? Libby Tyler.
We're fighting over who's going to mention the open house coming up, but I did want to mention that we had a very successful Urbana Art Expo yesterday at the Civic Center. We had something like 350-plus people come through. Quality of the art was excellent. The venue worked well, and I wanted to thank Pauline Tenos and the Public Arts Commission and Forty North, all the artists and all the other people who were involved. I know that some of you attended as well, so I wanted to mention that. Also, for those of you who like to read big, long documents, we do have a draft CAAPER, which is our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, out for review and working on completing revisions to that for the final document, but it is available in hard copy form at the library and on the website in City Clerk's office. And we're looking for comments by September 24th. Then at a later date, we'll be bringing the completed draft to the Community Development Commission and the City Council for review and approval. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other staff reports? Bill Gray, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. I wanted to bring to you, to the public's attention, the multimodal corridor enhancement project, otherwise known as MCOR, will have its open house Thursday, September 17th, at the Alumni Center, Ellis Campbell Alumni Center, 601 South Lincoln Avenue. There's two opportunities to attend and see, visit the open house 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the second is 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It's important for the public to at least be aware of this project in Urbana. It impacts Green Street between Race Street and Wright Street. Construction would be starting in 2016, so a year from now, literally, we will start construction along the stretch between Bucie and Wright. This will probably impact everyone that travels throughout the community just because of the street networks that are going to be involved here. It's hard to avoid Green Street no matter which way you would travel. So, we want you to be aware of the design. There's some pretty substantial changes and know of the construction schedule. And again, Urbana's commitment to this project, which involves rebuilding Green, in two phases or two stages. The first would be, again, between Bucie and Wright, starting next year, and lasting two construction seasons. And then, the second part would be Race Street between, excuse me, Green Street between Race and Bucie. That would start in 2018, finish in 2019. So, again, this Thursday, at the Ellis Campbell Alumni Center.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gray? Okay, thank you. Next up is approval of the minutes from the August 24th, 2015 meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved, second.
Moved by Aaron Ammons, seconded by Eric Jacobson. Any additions or corrections? I do have one correction. Page three, item 11. Urbana resident Chris Stohr addressed the committee. He spoke in support of Resolution Number 2015, not opposition, and I confirmed that with him today. And also, correction on his name. It's S.T.O.H.R. Looks like autocorrect kicked in on that one. Okay. If no further, any more corrections, the, could I have a, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those pass. Next up is public input. I have two cards, one from Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood and Reverend King James Underwood. They do not wish to address the committee, but ask that their concerns be entered into the record, that they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. And Matthew Riggs wishes to address the committee at the time of his agenda item, and that would be the text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Any other persons wish to speak? Dennis?
Yeah, I'd like to add to public comment from this perspective. We thought we might have a discussion item tonight, but we didn't quite get that straightened out, so we'll probably bring it back again next week. But I just wanted to mention it in general, so I have a memo here about it. And I just want to read that. "The mayor and the city council recently toured the Boneyard Creek between West Main Street and West Springfield to observe problems in land subsidence in the area and to view properties either recently demolished or scheduled for demolition, and to consider issues for new development along the creek, and to consider the desire to acquire easements along the Boneyard for future pathways and other city amenities, with the possibility open for new future development along western sections of the Boneyard Creek, not currently included in the Boneyard Creek Beautification Master Plan. It is important to define a larger vision for the Boneyard Creek in Urbana and to expand the mission and purpose of the Boneyard Creek Commission and the Boneyard Creek Commissioner. Therefore, I and several other members of council feel that it might be wise to explore the possibility of expanding the membership of the Boneyard Creek Commission, to reestablish it as a regular standing commission with open meetings and a published meeting schedule. Its mission would be to advise other city boards, commissions, and the city council regarding future development along the Boneyard Creek, to review all planning documents with respect to the Boneyard Creek, to lead planning and seek funding for the development of a complete linear pack, park, for the Boneyard Creek from the University of Illinois campus west of Lincoln Avenue through the current easternmost section five, at five points as defined by the Boneyard Creek Improvement Project, designed by Wink Associates and adopted in May of 2008, and listed among the goals of the 2015 Mayor and City Council Goals Document, which was adopted by the city council. So, this discussion would allow the city council to better serve the community in regard to the preservation and development of Boneyard Creek as a major city amenity. Although we expected this item to appear as a discussion item for tonight, we're going to be asking that it appear next week on the Monday, September 21st Agenda, as a discussion item." So, that's from myself and also from Charlie Smythe. Just wanted to share that with you as an upcoming item for consideration.
Thank you. Any other public input? Aaron?
Yes, I just want to strongly encourage the public and any of us who will be in town on September 17th in the evening to attend the Labor in Champaign County History. It's going, it's a free event, talking about the history of the labor movement and its importance to Illinois, sponsored by our wonderful State Representative Carol Lammens. And there's going to be some good information shared by Stephanie Seewell, who's the Executive Director of Illinois Labor History Society. There will be a dinner. It's free. Folks should come out. It's at the Labor Hall on Anthony Drive. I believe it's 108 East Anthony Drive in Urbana.
Thank you. Any other announcements? First item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2015-09-048R, which is a resolution authorizing the entry into and execution of an agreement between the City of Urbana and Community Foundation of East Central Illinois, and that's related to the Urbana Public Television. We have a staff report.
I'm Jake Schumacher, Station Manager for Urbana Public Television, and it's a pleasure to appear before you for the first time with me, Sanford Hess, my supervisor and the head of IT. This is, I'll make it as short and sweet as I can. This is, we seek approval to enter into an agreement with the Community Foundation of East Central Illinois to, for a non-endowed fund that would be used in support of Urbana Public Television broadcasting and activities. As you know, we broadcast all of the city council meetings. We essentially are the audiovisual arm of the city, in addition to serving as an educational station and a public access station. The agreement that we seek is identical, or nearly identical, to that which you have already approved for the Legacy Tree Program and the Public Arts Program. And it would enable us to do some fundraising for people that wish to support things like our broadcast of Urbana High School sports, our work with the schools, and things like that. And I want to particularly thank Jim Simon and Sanford for helping me through this process because I'm brand-new to this. But I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Charlie?
Yeah, real quick, will this, like, allow you to say sponsored by such-and-such in, say, when you do a sports broadcast?
I probably would not use the word sponsored, but a typical kind of public broadcasting underwriting circumlocution.
Right, yeah, okay. Acknowledging the underwriters, yes. Made possible by, yeah, okay, okay.
That's our goal.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I strongly support this.
Any other questions? Eric?
So, one of the things that I think would be great would be if this would enable you to do some representation of arts in Urbana, and especially projects that are supported by the Public Arts Commission. So, I think this is great, and I hope there'll be a coordination between you and Pauline to make this be a good outlet, for example, for some of the performing arts that we support to actually capture these in video and be able to preserve them and, you know, pass them on for future years.
I absolutely concur. And as you know, we do the Art Now program once a month. One of our production interns recorded and produced broadcasts of the Neighborhood Nights performances that the Urbana Park District supports. And quite frankly, I think that Urbana Public Television is a public art in itself, so whatever we can do to facilitate the documentation and presentation and promotion of the arts in Urbana is something we're very interested in doing. So, I appreciate that.
Aaron?
So, when I read through the resolution or the, I'm sorry, the memo basically stating what you want to accomplish, it said that it would, the money would be used to assist in the annual funding of UPTV. And my question, I just want to clarify, is this money going to be used as extra things so that we can sort of expand UPTV capabilities? Or is this going to be supplemental to what you normally get as annual funding from the city coffers, basically?
Well, yeah, the annual funding is the peg fee from Comcast, and I think we're viewing this as an opportunity to make sure that the income equals the outgo. And if we have, if we have the ability to raise funds for additional services, we would certainly go in that direction. Right now, we just want to make sure that we cover our budget as it stands. You know, just because there's a certain decline in cable revenues that I think we can all foresee, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Dennis?
Yeah. So, the, this is the same agreement that the Tree Commission, the Tree Commission has had for the Legacy Tree Program, and the Arts Council has been using it. Has the ability to use this foundation been very successful so far for the city? Do you, I don't know if you would know personally or not, but I'm wondering how, whether this has been making a difference yet for these two different entities?
Yeah, I don't. I actually, I should have had a chance to talk with Pauline about this, but we've both been pretty busy. But I am curious to know what kind of results they have. We did meet with Joan Dixon, and, you know, these are, these are funds that are not expected to be, you know, multi-million dollar funds.
Right.
Anytime in the near future. And the amount of staff time that we can put into fundraising, you know, is a question because we're minimally staffed as it is, but we're going to try to rearrange duties so that we can actively pursue this because we don't want to just, excuse me, we don't want to just have the fund and then let it sit there, you know? We want it to grow, so.
And I ask this partly because of, you know, we've had discussions within the Urbana Sister City Committee about, you know, the ability to fund a project, an exchange with a school in a different area, or travel, things that, you know, are what would, you know, the things that would enrich the activities of international interactions. And, you know, these all come at a price, and it's very difficult to make those, meet those needs. So, I'm just sort of wondering, I'd be very curious to see what activities prove to be successful for you in the future.
Yeah, you know, we have the advantage of having a television station, so that allows us a certain ability to reach out to the public that should help us in this case.
Charlie?
I move to send this to Council for approval.
Second.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Aaron. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Maybe you can raise enough money to bring Big Bird back to public television.
We'd love to.
Ordinance Number 2015-07-08R, which is the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Urbana, Illinois, an omnibus text amendment, Plan Case 2254-T15, and Community Development. Kevin Garcia.
Greetings. I will try and keep this pretty brief. There are only a few items to follow up on. But this is, this is really a follow-up to the omnibus text amendment that was first presented back on August 3rd. Attached, you will find, attached to your memo, you'll find a revised version of the proposed ordinance reflecting the staff's recommendations. The, so when we brought this to council back on August 3rd, there were some questions that council asked that staff do a little more research on, so that's what I'll be presenting here tonight. The first was, we had proposed allowing duplexes and extended occupancy duplexes in the R7 zoning district with a conditional use permit. After reviewing the case history of the R7 district, we feel that any changes to the R7 district would benefit from more study, so we are proposing the withdrawal of the changes that we had previously proposed, with the possible, with the possibility of reevaluating the R7 district in the future. On the second issue, there was a question regarding coffee roastery as a potential use, and I think this came about because there have been two proposed developments, the first being the Broadway Market, the second being 303 West Griggs Street. And two of the, both those proposals have mentioned coffee roastery as a potential use in those redevelopments. But regarding, regarding things, or regarding uses that are not specifically listed in the table of uses in the Urbana zoning ordinance, when they're not specifically mentioned in there, the zoning administrator is allowed to determine the use that most closely resembles the use in question. And in the case of a coffee roastery, we feel that, that our existing uses of a bakery or a cafe or deli would be appropriate, depending on whether the coffee roasting is a main use or an incidental use to a cafe. So, for instance, for the Broadway Market, that use, that proposed use would be incidental to a cafe because they were, they'd be proposing a coffee shop there as well. For 303 West Griggs Street, it would be more of a main use, so we would consider it more like a bakery of less than 2,500 square feet. So, we don't feel that at this time it's necessary to add coffee roastery as a separate use to the zoning ordinance. The final, the final item deals with electronic signs and the regulations pertaining to, really, the brightness of signs. So, there were a few questions that council had dealing with the proposed changes. The first was just regarded what effect the proposed changes would have on the brightness of signs. And there was a question about how the proposed changes would compare to what we're proposing for digital billboards. There was also a question as to whether existing signs would be required to conform to the proposed changes, or if they'd be grandfathered in. And along with that, there was some concern that the signs that exist in town might not have the technology required to automatically dim as, as is in the proposal. So, the council requested that we look, or that we take an inventory of existing signs and study this further. On page two of your memo, you can see that we did do, we did go out and inventory the signs with respect to the question regarding if the, whether the proposed changes would pertain to existing signs. In our research, we found that back in September 2009, we added the provision that digital signs would require automatic dimming technology. So, there are only three digital signs that were approved before that part of the ordinance, or before the ordinance was amended to include that. And so, there's really only three signs that aren't already required to meet the automatic dimming requirement, and we would propose that those be allowed to be grandfathered in and not have to conform to the proposals that we're making. But the rest, the rest should be equipped with, with the automatic dimming, so they should be, should be allowed to meet these requirements. I think one interesting thing to note, as we did the sign inventory, is that if you, if you look at the table, you'll see that the average size of the sign is only, of current digital signs is only about 20 feet. All the signs are under 35 square feet, and most of them are under 25 square feet. And the existing requirements for measuring the signs go from, says a sign from between zero and 100 square feet, and that's the smallest distance we're measuring. But really, the regulations that we have on the books aren't really, I think, reflective of what's actually on the ground. So, this proposal would, I think, address and would take a more nuanced approach to actually regulating the signs that, as they exist, and probably the signs as we'll see in the future. So, regarding the effects on sign brightness, this was something that I was not really schooled in before, and I think I've got a pretty good grasp of it now. The bottom line, I think, is that the proposed changes would decrease the proposed, or the perceived brightness of signs, basically because we'd be measuring the signs closer to the, to the sign face, and we would, yeah, we'd be measuring them closer to the sign face. And just because of the way that, that sign brightness works, the further you get away, the brightness goes down as it's, I think it's an inverse square equation, because you're looking at area. So, there's a table on page three of the memo. As you can see, we tried to compare the existing brightnesses at the face of the sign to the proposed brightnesses according to the recommendations that we're making. And you'll see, especially for the smaller signs, I chose 11 square feet for one of the examples because that is the smallest digital sign we have now. So, signs 25 feet or less would be 75% less, less bright as a maximum compared to what we, what we currently allow. So, I think, I think that really sums up my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I, so I'd say that with respect to this case, city council has the options to approve the proposed text amendment, to approve the proposed text amendment with specific changes, or to deny the proposed amendment. And I think there's an additional option, which is if there's something that you feel requires more study, I think we, we could strike that out and pass the, you know, pass the amendment. That might be included in, in the option of approving the proposed text amendment with changes. But I just want to put that out there. So, because we feel that most of the proposed changes are important to get, to get passed sooner rather than later, so if there's something that requires more study, you do have the option of asking that we make that a separate case. The Urbana Plan Commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval of the proposed changes, and staff would also recommend approval. And I will take any questions.
Charlie?
Yeah, thanks. I'm losing my voice, sorry. You showed me a formula a few minutes ago before you jumped into this that would sort of replace the tables, and is that, or is that just simply how you, that's how you calculated these tables? Would you incorporate that into the ordinance?
Well, these, so these tables were, were based on a report from the International Sign Association, and when I went back earlier today and looked at, at that report, I realized that they had a pretty simple formula in there for how to measure brightness and the distance, the distance that you would measure the brightness at. Unfortunately, I did not have time to, to create, like, an additional memo to share with everyone, so I didn't feel comfortable bringing that to the table without, without being able to show it to the entire council. But that's certainly something I think we could look into.
Yeah, I guess I would, you know, if we adopt this, I would encourage using that formula in here instead of tables that say zero to this, or, you know, zero to 25 feet or whatever, or one to 25 feet, because the formula is just, you know, basically tells you, you know, based on the square feet, that this is the brightness that would be, that would correspond to what we're after. The other choice we have here is, do we want .25 or .3 as the brightness level? And again, that formula can easily incorporate whatever choice we want to make here. So, I would encourage us to ask that you bring back the memo for next week and, you know, incorporate that into the, into the ordinance.
Aaron?
So, I'm looking at the table, and I don't understand, if I understand the table rightly, and maybe I don't, I don't see a difference between the current and the proposed. That is, it says that the distance, for example, let's look at 11-foot sign. It says that at 50 feet, it measures 734. At 100 feet, it measures 2935. That's a ratio of four, which is two squared. So, so I think that the, the brightness, the inherent brightness of the sign is exactly the same in the current and proposed. If I'm reading the table correctly, maybe I don't have the right understanding.
Yeah, and this stuff's not, it's not easy to wrap your head around, and I'm still wrapping my head around it. But it's also, it's possible that I could have labeled the table headings a little bit better. That brightness is what the, the brightness of the sign would be at its face. It's not.
Right.
So, it's, it's not what you would actually be measuring. So, it's, it's how bright the sign would be if you were standing right next to the sign. So, I can see how the table could be, yeah, it is kind of hard to understand because of that.
Oh, yeah, because, yeah, right. Because, because by, as it happens, that, yeah, okay, now I understand it, but as it hap, it looks as though it's, the two signs are exactly the same. the same brightness, because I was interpreting the, the brightness measurement as being at that distance.
But also, I think also, so if you're, if you're measuring something, if you were measuring something at, at 100 feet and, and the brightness measure is higher, and you're measuring something at 50 feet and the brightness measure is lower, then as you go out, it's going to get less bright still, though.
Sure, yeah, right, the square of the distance, right.
But, yeah, like the, the inverse square, I think is how you describe it, but...
Yeah, the brightness goes as the inverse square, right.
Any other questions? Mike?
Yeah, so being a barbecue major and not a math major, I just have to understand. So, an 11-square-foot sign, the last column says that the difference in the max brightness allowed, proposed slash current, one quarter or 75% less bright.
Yeah, so that...
Does that mean that we are going to require these signs to be 75% less bright than today?
As a max, yes. But I, I don't think you'd find, I don't think that 11-square-foot sign is even close to what the max brightness allowable is presently. So, and I, I haven't been out to, to measure all the signs, or any signs, actually. But I have a feeling that they're all in compliance with our current standards anyway. So we wouldn't be going out and saying, "All you folks with signs 25 square feet and less, you have to turn them down 75% from what they're at right now." I think they're in compliance with what's on the books and with what, what's being proposed. But I think we're, we're changing the requirements just so that they're easier to administer and so they make more sense. But, but would we be asking people to turn their signs down 75%? I really do not think we would be doing that.
Okay, but we don't know.
Correct.
All right. Well, then I guess I would suggest that we make that survey. Before we enact anything, we ought to find out just what we're doing. And don't get me wrong, I appreciate the work you've done on this. And I understand the concern here. But I also think that we ought to do justice to the businesses that are in town, and we ought to take a look at, a, a serious look at, what are their signs putting out today? We ought to measure that. And then take some action on this. I understand that most of these signs are probably adjustable, and I really appreciate you putting together a survey about who is probably in compliance with that and the few that might need to be grandfathered in. But I also think that it would be prudent for the council to, to ask the staff to survey the businesses, not survey the businesses, but actually measure the signs that are out there today and see just what they are putting off and who we are impacting and by how much. I just think that's a reasonable thing to do.
I agree. And I can go out this week and take those measurements.
Great.
Mayor Pressing?
Is there an industry standard for the brightness? And is this proposed standard typical of what other cities are doing?
Yes, yes, to both, both questions. Yeah, this was based off of the report over recommendations from the International Sign Association.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
And I'd just point out that even with the proposed changes for the 11-square-foot sign, the brightness at the sign would be 734, Candela's or Knitz, I guess. But the brightness for a digital billboard like you see in Champaign is currently 242. So it's still allowed to be three times brighter than a digital billboard, basically. So we aren't talking about making them dim. But I'm not opposed to measuring some and seeing, seeing who it would impact. I think the reason it's important to get these shorter distances is, like you said, you pointed out that we really don't have any signs greater, more than 35 square feet. So it doesn't make sense to measure them as though they were 100 square feet. I think was about what the 100-foot distance would have been appropriate for. So, yeah, I don't mind pulling this part out of the omnibus ordinance if that's what people want to do. But I think ultimately, I'll be in favor of it the way it is.
I believe I saw Charlie and then Dennis.
Well, I guess the issue would be if this can be measured in time for next Monday so that we have the information before us, in which case we could include this section. If it can't be, then we can exclude the section. So I think that's an easy thing to do. And I'll, I'll offer to give you a hand on going and measuring these. I think we have a light meter, right, to use for this?
We do, yeah. I have it on my desk.
Yeah, I just need a 50-foot tape measure. So I'll, I'll give you a hand. I'm a night owl, anyway. And so, so I think, I think the real issue is, is it .3 or .25 that we ultimately send forward on this? You know, just to have a standard item. So my question actually for you is, is the industry standard .3 or .25 in your reading on stuff?
Seems to be .3.
Dennis and then Eric?
And when the measurement is made, does it have to be done in a certain time of day or night? Or does that have an effect on the, on the brightness visibility?
It, it does have an effect. We are required to do it at least 30 minutes after sunset. And you're taking the measurements, you're looking at a difference between the ambient light and then the light with, in a best case, with the sign off. But there are ways to do it. If you, if you can hold something up and, and cover, cover the sign enough, you can, you can take a measurement that way. And then you take the, the difference between the two. I, I'm not sure, since you're, since you're measuring the distance between the ambient light you're, you're measuring at the time and then the, the light with the sign covered up, I don't think it matters at what time of night you do it, just as long as it's dark.
And are there particular signs in town that are of concern because of their maybe excessive brightness at this time? Is that why we're kind of also kind of concerned about setting different standard that maybe we had before?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that there are, that there are really signs of concern. Because of the regulations we have as to the location of where signs can go, I looked, and I, I can produce some maps for you all to, to see for next time, because I did put this into a GIS. Most of the signs are not even close to affecting, say, residential areas. I, I don't think, I'm not sure if there are any signs that really would be bleeding over into residential areas. I think that's where your big concern would be. Most of them are just in business areas facing other, other business, yeah, other commercial. I think, I think we're just, we realize that we can do, we can do better in terms of coming up with an approach that makes a little bit more sense. So I think that's really the impetus for, for these changes.
And I guess when, there seems to be like one or two signs that I see occasionally as I drive that seem to be especially bright. And I don't know if it's because so much more white is being used in the display or some other reason. But every time I go by, it's one or two of these businesses, they just seem more glaring than other digital signs I've observed. So I thought maybe that was one of the reasons that you wanted to have a survey done. Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Any other, oh, Eric?
So I'm assuming that one is looking for a happy balance, because if the sign's too dim, it can't be read. But if it's too bright, it's going to bleach the driver's eyeballs and prevent it from, prevent him or her from, from seeing the road properly. So I assume that the standards are, the national standards or industry standards are designed with that trade-off. But one of the things that I wanted to ask is, does it make sense to have one level of brightness? Or should there be a daytime, should there be daytime and nighttime levels?
No, that's a great question. So to, first, if I can speak to the first comments that you made. The, I think the, the digital sign industry recognizes that, that signs can be too bright. So they make recommendations for, for coming up with a, a good range where people, like you said, won't be, you know, won't be blinded by them, because really bright signs are not very legible. So the, the sign industry understands that. So I think they're, they're trying to help out the, the people that they're selling signs to by, by saying there's a reasonable range of, of brightness. As to the, as to your question about daytime versus, versus nighttime, yes. With, with digital signs, it's interesting because they need to be brighter during the day to be legible. Like if you go outside with, with a smartphone, you need to turn up the brightness on a really sunny day. And at night, you can turn down the brightness. It's the, it's the same type of thing. But since, I think since, since you're, you're measuring with respect to, to the ambient light levels that are around, so during the day, the sun can be, can be very bright. And, but, but if you have a standard that says you can go this much brighter than the ambient light, I think that addresses it.
Okay, so the standards that we're looking at, or the criteria we're looking at, are brightness above ambient, not, not absolute brightness?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I do have one member of the public who wishes to give input on this amendment. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
As far as public input, Matthew Riggs, his business address is 1901 South High Cross Road, regarding this ordinance.
Madam Chairman, I think I probably should recuse myself from even this discussion at this point in time because I'm aware of what Mr. Riggs is going to testify about.
This is regarding microbrewery.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matt Riggs. I don't have any objection to anything regarding the sign. I just wanted to actually voice my support for the small part of this omnibus that discusses allowing a microbrewery as a permitted use in a B3 and B4 zone. I currently have a plan to start a microbrewery at the named address in the near future, and that would help me move along in my planning and execution of the business. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them either now or afterwards.
Any questions for Matt?
I guess it would be appropriate to share what your expected start date is and what your plans are timewise, yeah.
Okay. Our goal is to, to open and, yeah, be in business, actually selling product on the first of May of 2016.
So, Charlie, are you conflicted as a, as a devoted beer connoisseur, or is that okay?
No, I can't wait.
Mayor and then Bill?
So what is the address?
1901 South High Cross Road.
TK Wendell's.
Okay, thank you.
Formerly known as.
Right.
Bill?
Yeah, I can't find it now, but I think our limit was 15,000...
15,000 barrels per year.
Barrels, okay. Is that, is that typical? I was going to look that up before I came, but I didn't get a chance. Is that typical definition of microbreweries? And I thought I heard talk that maybe that was too low for something like Triptic, and they were thinking about raising, or maybe I didn't, maybe it was someplace else.
15,000 barrels, I believe, is, is the, the borderline that the trade association, the Brewers Association that represents the most brewers in America has set as the upper limit of a microbrewery. Anything larger than that, they classify as a regional brewery or far beyond that, national brewery. But yes, that's, that's the trade organization's definition or limit of a microbrewery.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan?
Is there a motion? Charlie?
Okay, so I'll move to send this to council with recognition for approval with a caveat that we'll get additional information if it's ready on the, the sign illumination portion, in which case we, and if it's not ready, we will pull that out. I would also encourage a memo to the, on the formula as well. And I assume, are we going to, I guess the last piece of that is, so I'll move that, but we do need to decide on .3 versus .25.
Tonight?
Or by next week.
Okay, I'll second your motion.
Further discussion?
I'd just add on that .3 versus .25, it should, you know, if there is a majority or a supermajority that's going to do digital billboards, that the two numbers should be the same. That's the consistency that I'm looking for. So...
Okay, the ordinance was moved by Charlie, seconded by Dennis with the copy, with the inclusion of language that we are looking at the impact on current businesses as well as including the formula that was discussed.
Do you want that split, Mike?
You know what, I'll recuse myself tonight. We'll deal with it...
Next week.
Next week.
Okay. We can split out the microbrewery portion if need be, yeah.
You know what, why don't we? That's, if you don't, I would appreciate that accommodation.
Okay. So, the microbrewery portion is, I see it in a table of uses. Is there another?
I'll just, I'll just make my motion to split the two pieces as appropriate according to what the city attorney recommends so that we see two motions, or two ordinances next week. One, one...
Yep, there's a definition and then it includes in the table.
Yeah, yeah, just split it out.
All right. So we'll take the first motion without the microbrewery language in it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. And now we'll consider language for microbrewery, which includes a definition and table of uses.
And I'll recuse myself.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Charlie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dennis. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay. That passes. Okay, thank you. Last item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2015-09-049R, Resolution Approving Property Tax Rebates for Certain Properties Within the Berenger Commons Subdivision, Community Development, Libby Tyler.
This is a follow-up action to the economic development agreement that was passed by council in August, which picked up the property tax rebates for the Berenger Commons subdivision from the previously existing annexation agreement. As we noted, at that time, we weren't able to include all of the eligible addresses because they had not already requested, the rebates weren't in the seven-year timeframe which we were offering, nor were these properties owned by the developers. So we were advised that these could best be accommodated by separate resolution. So we're talking about nine different properties. Two of these are actually on their seventh year and were inadvertently left out of the agreement. So we've included them in this resolution. And then the other seven properties are, as I described, they're vacant properties with the exception of one which has a building permit. And I would just remind the council that we're talking about a short-term stopgap for this resolution and when we expect our enterprise zone to take effect, which would be July 1st, 2016 at the latest.
Any questions? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd move approval.
Seconded.
Okay. Moved by Mike Madigan, seconded by, was it Eric? Charlie?
Charlie.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mike?
I just want to say thank you, Libby, and your staff for putting this together. I really appreciate the work. And I know the developer... I really appreciate the work, and I know the developer does as well. So, thank you.
You're welcome, and I want to mention also our legal department and finance department, we all worked together on this, so...
Everybody involved. I wasn't trying to leave anybody out.
All those in favor of sending this to council, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Well, with no further business before the council, this meeting stands adjourned.